My pleasure to be back.
And I don't know, we'll just have a back and forth if it's all right with you?
Sure, perfect.
You know, we'll give the opportunity for the public to ask questions too. The press is here and they want to meet with you maybe afterwards.
Sure, perfect.
Yeah, so thanks for coming.
I can give you a real short preamble and then just open it up for questions.
Yep.
Great. First, thank you for taking the time. It's good to be with you. At the end of this month here, I will have been back to 45 counties in Montana. And I always try and come and see the commissioners because I think the best government is the local government to know what all the local issues are. So I'm here mostly to listen. My constitutional responsibility in Congress is oversight. And in particular, we have a lot of interactions with our federal agencies. And where I've been, where I've had more success has been an advocate for individual Montana groups, whether it's small businesses or counties or irrigation districts or whoever it happens to be, in advocating with federal agencies to grease the gears if we need to get a permit freed up or whatever the issue happens to be. So again, I'm here to listen and to take back things that we might be able to act on your behalf for. I am encouraged. We've gotten some stuff done over the last year. I'm particularly pleased, working with the president, we got tax relief done, we've got regulatory relief. I've had a number of bills passed the House and get signed into law. One of them gives county commissioners the ability to do management of federal forests through the farm bill. That's the Good Neighbor Authority. That tool historically was only available to the state government, but through an amendment I introduced last summer, passed the House, passed the Senate, the president signed it, county commissioners can now propose reduction of hazardous fuels or habitat enhancement on federal lands within your county. Mako is working on that, so they're a resource to you and our office can help as well. I also just entered a bill that will modify the PIL formula, particularly for our smallest counties. There was a, I worked with Todd Devlin on this. There's an issue where the per capita payments only went down to 5,000 people per county. This mostly affects rural eastern Montana counties, but the bill will add per capita line items for 4,000, 3,000, 2,000, and 1,000.
3,000 or 3,000.
There you go. So this would increase your per capita payment. Now, this is not law yet, but I have two Democrat co-sponsors on the bill. Peter Welch out of Vermont and a gentleman out of California. I've spoken with the chairman of Natural Resources. And so this would give Granite County more money if we get this enacted at the door. I got a CBO score on it. Now, Washington's kind of another world. To them, a couple million dollars is not a lot of money. So this doesn't cost that much. So it didn't get a CBO score. So the likelihood of it getting enacted into law is pretty high.
Right.
So I'm encouraged by that. That should give you some more money for infrastructure.
Have you been joined by our sheriff, Sheriff Dunkerson?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Okay.
And I always love to have law enforcement at the table and meeting with sheriffs. I'd love to get some input from you as we get into our discussion, just about what you're seeing with the drug epidemic here in terms of its effect on crime and families. There are some things I'm seeing other counties doing. I'm curious what's going on here in Granite County. So with that, I'll just, it's a pleasure to be here and I'm here to listen.
Okay, so I guess we'll start off with Mr. Hinkle.
Well, I'll talk about fires first. Now, I talked to him a little bit about it. And you know, we have the Forest Advisory Committee here and trying to get something going. And their farm bill really served us well on that. But you know, as far as the 2017 fires, and that's kind of what got me here. In fact, that's what got me here. Because I was all pissed off at what the Forest Service was doing and their attitude and these teams that come in and their arrogance and that they think they're running the country. And like I told you earlier, I can show you right now that they let 2,000, but I know them and I tried to get them to not like that, burn that. And it wouldn't have burned. And it just scorched everything, cracked rocks, and it's horrible. Killed three to 400-year-old trees. And anyway, so and then as far as the smoke goes, we were socked in here. My wife and I work outside a lot and she's out wearing a mask. And I don't think the federal government has that right to subject the people to the hazardous smoke. And especially nowadays that they know that it's, it's killing people. I mean, people with chronic conditions. And so I just, you know, if they can fight the fires, our committee kind of agrees all this to, and send the commissioners to, that we recommend, in fact, we did a resolution on that, that the Forest Service fight all fires and knowing that some will get away, but you still fight them and won't let them.
More aggressive initial attack.
Exactly.
And, and, and you know, if there are, it's, as there are issues in the moment, don't hesitate to reach out to our office.
Right.
I've been working an issue, it's not the US Forest Service, but it's Department of Interior. I have the Secretary of Interior coming to Montana in two weeks specifically to talk about grizzly bears. Less of an issue in this part of the state, but a big issue up on the...
We have lots of grizzly bears.
Well, I'm taking them. In Choto last year, they had to do a lockdown at the high school because there's a grizzly bear on the football field. In Shelby, they're shooting a cannon off every 10 minutes to chase them off the golf course. And they're swimming in the lake in Valier. You can't go out at night anymore. And so we're going to take them up there and show them some of this stuff to get them delisted.
Swing, swing by here.
Yeah, you go kill an elk in Belleville, you'll see a bear. You know, just that's, they're getting close.
The science shows that they're recovered and we need to get them delisted. So I've been trying to, again, this is one of the advantages of being there and working with the administration. We have these relationships. Dave Bernhardt's been in my home in Bozeman and he agreed to come out specifically to do this bear survey.
Well, I heard on the news a couple of weeks ago where there was a member of Congress from, not here, from Montana who said that the forest needed to burn. And with an attitude like that, they don't need to burn, they will burn. But we don't, this is in 1804 where there wasn't hardly any people. I mean, we have people, but it's really affecting. And I think that the federal government should be protecting their citizens.
Yeah. And the, you're well aware of the issue. I mean, the Forest Service, 55% of their budget is consumed in firefighting. It's consuming all available resources. And this is why getting tools like the Good Neighbor Authority where a county or the state can actually do forest management, it gives us healthier forests, it improves habitat, there's more recreation, we have jobs, and wildfires are less. So everybody wins.
I agree with that. But I'm just stating.
Yeah. So I, my efforts been to try and get tools so we have more local management control of the forests.
That's great. That's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Well, it's obvious we can do it. The state does a pretty good job. You know what I mean? So it's not like it's impossible to do. Mr. Adams, have some questions?
No, I was just, minor, a lot on the fishing game. You know, I think somebody needs to be in our control of them due to the fact that they, you know, we use our roads and everything else and they never compensate themselves.
You mean US Wildlife Service?
No, fishing.
Oh, the state.
You're sort of in a unique position here.
I don't have any...
We're gonna run that way.
Talking the future, right?
Yeah.
There's, there's, in all the traveling I do, I mean, last week I was in Weibo, Terry, Glendale, Culverton, Polson, not, yeah, Polson, Poplar, Wolf Point, Scobie, Plentywood, Malta, Haver. And I meet with the county commissioners and these issues come up. I mean, I hear a lot of times you can't even get a permit for a gravel permit from DQ. I mean, clearly, we need to be able to process permits that work more quickly at a state level. But nothing I can do about that right now. Sheriff?
I know you guys heard this before and we use law enforcement, we're a small community and if we're seeing the effects of Mexican heroin and now here to your county jurisdiction in Montana, it's...
And you are.
And we are. I got a, I got a new manager over there. I'm making the Mexican heroin. So we are seeing the effects of that. I agree with the US Attorney's stance on prosecuting more aggressively the ones that are, for the violent offenses and possession of firearms. They need to be prosecuted more aggressively because they continue to be released and continue to be a problem for law enforcement statewide. We see it over and over and over again.
These are the dealers.
And we're going to continue to, dealers, anybody that's involved with it. And as law enforcement, we're going to continue to keep arresting them and throwing them back in and arresting and throwing them back in. But there's a point where they need to be sentenced more harshly in federal prison as far as...
I know.
Would you mind picking up the candor again?
Yeah, we've got a lot to talk about.
Yeah, so I've been in dialogue with the US Attorney and I think this is going to take all parks in the community to deal with this issue. Your experience is the same. I was talking to a sheriff up in Fergus County and he said he knows when the Mexican meth arrives because he sees a spike in the crime rate.
Right.
And we know when the delivery show up.
We see a spike along with those folks that are using it with mental health issues as well. Hallucinating, you name it, they do all sorts of things that land them in a mental health facility that's defunct to say a bear man at the state level. They get released, if we have somebody commit it faster than he drives on the paperwork we did to commit it, that's broken.
Do you have, do you have any kind of treatment court?
No. We, we're... We have a small gym. That's our treatment.
We're, we're seeing good success around the state with these treatment courts. And the, and you're all familiar with them, but it's, it's a disciplined approach that's an alternative to incarceration that actually focuses on getting people healthy and back on their feet. Not, I mean, I'm with you. The dealers, violent addicts, they need to go to jail.
They need to go to prison for it.
Right, exactly. The nonviolent, people that are addicted to drugs. I personally believe we've got to be focused on getting them healthy and that's what the treatment courts do. And the graduates of these courts, three years after graduation, 70% of them are still clean and holding a job.
Who pays for that?
It pays for itself. And here's how. Incarceration is $40,000 a year for an inmate. A treatment court is $4,000 a year. You can take two nonviolent addicts out of jail and put 20 people into a treatment court for the same amount of money. You've just got to get it out of one. And mostly these treatment courts are in our bigger counties, Gallatin County, Yellowstone County. But I was just up with the judge in Lincoln County, they're starting one in Libby. So they're starting to come to smaller communities and it's just something to consider. I think that personally, given the breadth of this drug problem, we need to find ways to get people healthy. And these treatment courts are one way to do it.
You know as well as I do, it's not just the drug crimes are being committed. We're having a lot of thefts, burglaries as a result of the drug problem.
Domestic violence.
Absolutely.
We have 4,000 kids in foster care in the state.
Yeah, assaults, violent assaults, you name it.
Single parent households. There's a ripple effect that not only is it a moral tragedy, it's an economic tragedy too, if we can't figure out how to help get people healthy. So I just, I would, I was just with Matt Cuff is the judge up in Lincoln County in Libby. And he's just launching a treatment court in that small community there. So there's a way to do it. We helped, my wife and I personally helped get one started in Lake County. It was, it was, in the scheme of things, not that much money. It was about a $50,000 bill to fund it for the first year. And then they got a federal grant to continue the operation. And again, you're already spending the money.
Sure.
You're spending it on jail. We're just going to take, the theory is take a portion of that, reallocate it to help people get healthy and hopefully get better outcomes.
Well, there's virtually no resources for mental health in this jurisdiction. We have a small amount that we can use. Something that Sheriff's Office here is doing, you wanted to hear about that a little bit, is we've always had a participating agency over the Southwest Drug Task Force. Recently, however, probably the last couple of years, we also found the West Central Drug Task Force, which is out of the Zulu. So we could, Granite County's kind of funny that way. We're right on the line of these jurisdictions and it seemed to be, we're a small agency in a smaller rural county, so we're kind of pushed off to the side a little bit, I've noticed. So anyway, joining the West Central Drug Task Force has seemed to help tremendously. We do work together. And part of that is they do grant funding for us to do drug interdiction patrols and when we do those patrols, we'll probably be hit up. When we do do them on I-90 the hardest in our 30 miles of jurisdiction. So that's something we're working towards. They occasionally work with a drug team, highway patrol, they do drug interdiction out there as well, but just a small work. That's some of the things that we're doing to help slow this down.
Yes.
Thank you for your service.
So I think, just to tack on to the sheriff, you know, my history in law enforcement, you know, the mental health providers is the county jail initially. Sadly, okay, so in your current position and maybe your next one, this is not going away. And it's always been a war against a centralized mental health facility, you know, versus, you know, regionalized or even just community mental health, okay? And I think we all would agree that the community mental health approach seems to be the most, that's where we see the best results, okay? Where somebody can be notified and go to the jail initially and then start working with local professionals to where we do this person. We don't have a crisis fossil, you okay?
Well, help me elaborate on that a little bit, Bill. We have crisis intervention teams that come to the jail, but recently they just sent a letter out, we've lost a bunch of funding, we don't have any staff, we want to do this telemedicine, which we have the ability to do that. But for example, yesterday, we made a call for that request for somebody in crisis and did not get them. I actually had our local provider evaluate this person and deem them safe to themselves before they left our jail. Or wasn't the jail there in the meeting room?
What has been your experience with the telehealth services?
Well, if we get our laptop up and running, it usually works pretty well. But they had a bunch of cuts. They're in the Western Montana Mental Health in view. And we're not seeing the folks coming to evaluate, you know, people with mental health issues because of the cuts, I guess because they're shorthanded, don't have the staff.
See, in a crisis situation, it's amazing, the sheriff normally knows these people, okay, or somebody that you communicate with.
It's not the first time she...
Yeah. And, and, and these are people that are out, not taking their drugs and medications and or because they can't afford them or the side effects, but it happens, they get off their nerves, mostly because they can't afford it. And then so if we could get them to a localized crisis facility, overnight, they're back on their medications, they're like, oh God, I'm sorry, what did I do? They're back to work, okay? We've seen this over and over. We just, I mean, we just hope that folks understand, you know, there is some proven methods to deal with these people that keep us all safer. This goes to the suicide issue too. Big tech. The biggest threat for suicide is, is the county jail, okay? You know, people, they're, they're rock bottom, right, when the old door slams. So these are issues that we'd love to work with somebody who wants to improve. And it costs us money. When we have the sheriff out, you know, going somewhere with a little person and then having to wrinkle back to court the next day and then back maybe to the facility, geez.
Just yesterday, my other sheriff was tied up for three quarters of his shift with a mental health issue.
Well, you got five guys.
It's a bad... Yeah, it's 20% of your capacity after that. So, and it's, it's probably weekly, you know, for a small agency in a small jurisdiction, at least weekly that we give somebody having those types of issues.
I just had a roundtable two months ago in Billings with, and it was on substance abuse and mental health. And we had all the rimrock and local law enforcement and, and as you are well aware, they're so intertwined, it's almost the same thing. And obviously, in a crisis situation, you can't differentiate as a mental health issue as a substance abuse issue. It's almost always both. And so I, I, I hear that loud and clear. We've been in... From a federal perspective, I served on the healthcare subcommittee. I am working on a bill right now with the chairwoman of that committee, she's a Democrat from California, specifically to remove friction from doing more telemedicine. Because I think in Washington DC, they think Billings is rural.
Yeah. But you're in frontier, Mark.
Correct. Correct. And that's what we, how we refer to it, frontier medicine. And we're not going to have every specialist in every community. So telemedicine is the way we can get mental health specialty and particularly behavioral health. I was pleased to see Billings Clinic just started a residency program for providers in mental health. That'll hopefully increase the capacity in the state. Now, it takes a while to spin that up, but they have to be services that you can rely on, they have to be there when you need them.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of these are interrelated issues, but you know, I think we're the number one suicide per capita state, you know, we're on some of the grid route. But it has a lot to do with how rural we are and the reservations and you know, if you start looking at the capacity. But we, we give a damn about our kids and we really want to do something, we'll try stuff. The problem is that we watch the national news and it looks like to us that, you know, Washington wants to try stupid stuff. I mean, the red flag laws. I mean, we know that if you go back the last three or four, those probably wouldn't stop you, okay?
Everything, Bill, sorry to interrupt you. Everything that in my eyes anyway that it seems like Washington wants to address, they want to take away law-abiding citizens' rights in order to address this issue just gives me a migraine to listen to this.
It does us. And you know, with the red flag laws, it's not just about taking away the law-abiding weapon, there's no due process. And we're sensitive to that. Like, we're not, we're, we're going to actually circumvent the Constitution. If you, if they pass one in Montana, this guy is in a real bad spot because he put his hand up and said, I support defending the Constitution. And then they're going to ask him to do an unconstitutional act.
Well, the Second Amendment's pretty clear, it says shall not be enforced.
Exactly. Well, I know, I will stand behind him. But my point is, you know, anything you can do to touch and common sense on those people back there. I mean, we live with this stuff on the ground, okay? There are ways to interdict, but jeez, I mean, you don't take our constitutional rights the way to do it. We're giving a baby, throwing a baby out of the bath.
This is why I voted against HR9 this year, which was the, it was one of the top 10 priorities for leadership in the House. HR9 was unconstitutional in my mind. If, Bill, if you and I went hunting and my rifle jammed, it required mandatory three-day background checks. And if you and I went hunting together and my rifle jammed and you loaned me your rifle for the remainder of the day, one year in prison, $100,000 fine.
That's crazy, man. So let's, let's talk about background checks just a little bit.
That, just for the record, that bill passed the US House.
Well, I, what they're looking for is a quick solution to a tough problem. They want one solution, you know, it isn't going to take, it's a lot of things, okay? One of the things that they could do is that the background check system is, it sucks. I mean, there's, these people are getting, yeah, go ahead and sell a gun when actually, you know, all the systems didn't, weren't checked and there in fact was a way to deny that person. That's happened three or four times to these things. So you know, fix what you got before you start adding...
We have rules on the books we should be enforcing.
Exactly.
And I think there is, just the, the nature of the conversation right now, people are asking that something be done.
Yeah, they're just paying...
And, and the reality is, in my view, I agree with you, I don't think there's any particular rule that we can pass 2,000 miles away that's going to make our community safer. If we don't come together as a community. But what happened in Ravalli about a year ago is a good example of the way it should work. It was an individual, clearly disturbed, he threatened violence in a school on the internet. The sheriff went and picked him up and put him in jail.
Talk him right here. He's done it too. Because people were talking to each other.
And, and, and when the community comes together and we watch out for each other, that young man got the help he needed and the school was safe, which is the outcome we want.
Yep. We've got a school social officer program and he's a couple of times, you know, you don't hear about that, but it happens and it works. I'm going to shift gears on you just a second here if I can. As you know, Granite County holds a dam in Georgetown Lake. And when they acquired the dam, they got some money to maintain the dam. And over the years, you know, the dam's old, you make this. This board's been very good about, you know, dam physical, structural, safety stuff we fix, okay? FERC, initially, there wasn't a lot of problem, you know, you should do this, you should do that. But as the years go on, since 2016, we've spent over $600,000. And we don't mind the structural stuff, we're actually doing some right now. It's the study. 40,000 bucks, 60,000 bucks. Well, they broke us. We had a million bucks to maintain that dam and right now, we're down to 100,000, 140,000.
You spent on studies?
We spent it on, it's not always spent on something, sure, we're good to it. But you know, here, here's an example. They had, they called us about, we have to do a study, notified us, we have to do this study. And then they said, and by the way, you're going to hire Dow and company out of Billings to do it because they're the only ones we'll accept. And I said, well, wait a minute, we'll put it out for bid. No, we all said, we'll put it out for bid. No, you won't because we won't accept it from anybody else. So now we got a bureaucrat telling us to do a study and then telling us who to do, who we're going to pay to do the dam study, okay? I mean, these guys are out of control.
This is FERC.
Yes. We sent you a letter, Dane's even tester. And we've heard back from your people, okay? You know, they're, they're located on the west coast. They just dictate to us, you know, what, you know, we're going to do another seismic study. We're going to do another study about, you know, where the floodwaters will go if the dam ever breaks. And that study's been done a hundred times. Well, guess what? If you blow the dam and it breaks, you're going to get wet. And we can tell you the map about how you're going to get met and win. But no, no, we got to do that all over again. Greg, this is crazy. At some point, we're going to run out of money. Now, do you, do they really expect us to use public money outside of the maintenance money that we're regenerating from power generation? Because our power generation doesn't pay us enough to maintain that kind of a maintenance program that they want to get us on. And it's, it's really been, what would you say, Mike, from about 2000, about 2000 on, they started getting on us about more and more studies and more and more, things like that. In other words, it's changed. Half, FERC, all has always been that way.
Yeah.
And they're just out of control. And they're going to be here next week for another full inspection of the dam. They did one three years ago, came back the next year and we said, well, I thought you were going to give us two years. And they said, no, because of the dam that lost the spillway, remember in California? Okay. No, no, we're going to come back. Our spillway was fine the first year, the next year, they found all kinds of problems with our spillway. They were here in the same dam, do you see what I'm saying? You know, it's just like, one of the best things President Trump did was to take away regulation, okay? And somebody has forgot these guys because maybe they ought to be next.
Okay. So you're having a visit from them next week.
Yep.
Is there anything you want us to do in anticipation of that visit?
Well, I mean, I think it's, they're unreasonable, the demands for the studies on everything from earthquakes to mapping of where the water's going to go. Look, we had 130-year-old gates in that dam, we replaced them, we needed to replace them. That was a, you know, it's good public policy to replace. Right now, we're doing about a 200-some thousand reconstruction of the front dam, a fascia thing that does affect the structure of the dam. We don't mind doing that. It's, it's what the maintenance money is for. But these studies are crazy stuff and we're coming out to inspect this and that. Okay, I mean, you know, they told us, honest to God, we never see FERC except for one reason, we produce power. Otherwise, the state would inspect our dam and that'd be nothing. Just because we produce a little power. And we don't, we, we're buying the power plant, so we don't get that much. This month, it'll be what, 7,000 bucks maybe? And it builds up that fund and then we do a study and we don't...
Power don't even stay here.
Power don't even stay here.
Yeah.
So what I, feel free to reach out to our staff anytime. Have this visit next week.
Okay.
As you get the punch list back from them, if you deem any of the requests unreasonable, let us go to bat.
Okay. We got two studies that we're, they're going to make us do that we think are just crazy.
Okay.
And, and they're asking us to do the construction? Absolutely. And we're right on schedule with them. Salute smartly and do it right, okay? That's not the point.
Yeah.
It's, it's all these crazy extra stuff.
So have they requested these two--
Yes.
--studies which you think are unnecessary?
Right.
Okay. And there might be more after next week's meeting?
Yes. Yeah, guaranteed there will. But they never quit. In other words, they, they approved the construction. We went up this morning and had the, you know, the first construction meeting. And oh, by the way, we got an email from FERC. They don't like the PSI that the C-Met holds up, so they raised it. I'm like, "What? In the middle of this? How much is that?" You know? "It's not that much." But they waited to the last minute, to the last minute, "Oh, by the way, you have to have a, sort of 4,500 pounds, you got to have more." You know, this is how they do business. Sent out an email. I mean, come on, people. Here's another problem. They'll give us a big punch list, like we had the last few years, and we'll put it out, we hire a firm out of Helena, a engineering firm. We go through the punch list, we fix everything on the punch list. A lot of this paperwork, but we get it all done, we send it in. We don't hear a thing for a year. A year. 365 days later, they go, "Oh, this is wrong, that's wrong, you have to do this, we want it, don't want it done that way, we want it done this way." I said, "Where the hell you been for a year?" I mean, that's just not appropriate. And, and it's wrong. And small counties can't function with this kind of, you know, boot in their face oversight.
So I'll follow up with our team.
Okay.
And we'll work through Sonny. We'll pursue these two studies that you think are unnecessary. And if there's new stuff that comes back from the visit next week, just let us know.
God bless her. That'll be good.
I can't promise a positive outcome--
No, but at least we're trying. That's what we care about. So, let's see. Oh, yeah, you, you never really come down one way or the other on the CKST water thing, right?
Oh, I've been pretty clear. We need a compact. We don't want to end up in court for 30 years.
Okay. But you're going to anyway, because we're going to sue you into the dark ages. Because they're taking water from off-reservations.
Okay. Let me, let me just finish the current update. I've been working-- we've been meeting with the tribe. We've been meeting with folks, water right holders off the reservation. We've been working with Department of Interior.
Yeah.
You're looking at one here or two?
Yeah, you are too.
Yeah. So, and I have to tell you, I've been encouraged by the conversation.
Good.
We're in a, the best way to get a deal concluded is not to make all the negotiations public in an open forum like this. But I share your concern about the off-reservation rights.
People, they support the, you know, the tribal waters thing. Great. Give, you know, make sure they got it, you know, nailed down in for them. But off-reservation--
That's a take.
Okay. They didn't file against them, we did. Okay, we did it through the courts the way we're supposed to do it, okay? And as you know, this is just going to, the ground out here is worth a lot of money, because it's going to be worth anything without a lot of--
The challenge with the current agreement is the off-reservation rights.
As long as you're aware of that.
And we are doing everything on our ability to come to an agreement that will satisfy the tribe and the off-reservation water rights holders.
Good.
It's not completely under my control, but I share your concerns. And I've said all along, we need a compact. The current one, we don't have enough consensus on it.
Right. Well, some of the process was a little fuzzy, okay? Because we all participated. Any people in this room, any of the ranchers? And we watched the Montana House of Representatives defeated, right? In committee. And then the silver bullet, find that in the Constitution for me, where? The silver bullet, they put it in front of 100 US, excuse me, Montana House members that had never heard the arguments. So they voted on something they had never heard the testimony. And yet they didn't respect their own members who killed it. That's fish. Come on, that, that started all bad, right?
There is a, a real need to get a compact concluded. I've been encouraged by the conversations with the tribe, Department of Interior, and the water rights holders.
Great. Well, once again, think about the off-reservation water.
That is the road. So we're working to rid off that.
All right, good deal. Well, that's a big deal. A lot of our constituents come and see us every week. We'd be glad to hear--
Senator Danes has been taking the lead on that, and I've been supporting that.
I've had conversations with Senator Doerr as well. All right, so that kind of concludes my list. Oh, one other thing, help me here, guys. We had the county health nurse in here. If she wanted me to ask you, we get Medicare money for vaccinating folks that have kids that go into school, need vaccinations, that can't afford it, okay? And so we have a process we have to go through with Medicare to get refunded.
Yep.
It's a nightmare. "Oh, the code's wrong. Oh, we changed the code. Oh, and here's the thing." There's no question in my mind, or these guys, they're just trying to avoid to pay the damn thing. Okay, so we submit, we vaccinated of our county money, and then a percentage we submit to Medicare to get a reimbursement for those vaccines. Yeah, you got to be kidding me.
Sonny, can you meet with the public health nurse?
So they haven't rejected our account? They wouldn't give the county account because the checking account's under Granite County Treasury versus Granite County? So we don't want to have an account to, Bill, Medicare?
Every silly thing they can think of, they throw in the face to say, "No, we're not going to pay."
Could you meet with the public health nurse?
Sure.
And get the details--
Yeah.
Make sure--
We'll try and grease the gears there.
Well, I, I mean, you know, we care about our kids. We're going to vaccinate. But we'd like to get reimbursed because we're a small county.
And you should. That's what the program's there for.
Yeah, that's what, so that was from Katie. But that about concludes my, my list.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. Anybody else? All right, how about if we open up to public donors?
Sure, happy to.
Could you guys come up and stand here so the congressman can hear you? Did you have questions for Congressman Jean Cortez?
I had to turn it off.
Oh, okay. All right.
I already have that.
Anyone? Okay.
I'd like to talk a little bit about forest.
Sure.
You're going to speak up. He said he's a forest.
My name is Patty Candice, and I come from a four-generation logging family. And I wish I could be king of the land for just one day, you know, across the nation. I would stop all litigation on the forests. And I would also fire every forest ranger that isn't a real forester. Because I think our forest service is full of people that are environmentalists, wildlife biologists. And I have a deal with Warehouser. And a lot of environmentalists, they know they were going to be blamed for all the dead trees because of all the litigation. So then they come up with a new plan. "Let's blame it on global warming." Well, that isn't true. Because Warehouser, Plumcrick, Potlatch, they have the most beautiful stands of timber in the United States. And we've logged on Denny Washington's timber. We've logged all around Georgetown Lake, all over the valley here. All new forest is coming in, it's beautiful. So why isn't there trees dying from global warming? If that is the cause. And I wish you'd point that out to these scientists, that that isn't true. They're well-managed forests. And the reason Warehouser does so good, two things. They don't get litigated, and they hire the best foresters in the world. And really, most of our rangers are not foresters. And I think we need to have that. And I'm with Chuck. I'm tired of the forest fires. And you could drive around Georgetown Lake, you can see Forest Service, like pickup sticks you know when you're a kid, it's all dead and dying. And then the private land that is managed. It's beautiful, it's sustainable. Warehouser, they log, in fact, they bought out Plumcrick. Did you know that? You probably knew that. In 2016, 8.4 billion. They have the largest timber holdings in America right now. And they're so sustainable. They have new stuff coming in. They have great carbon sinks where our Forest Service, you know, gives off carbon. And that's really bad. But Warehouser says they only log 2% of all their timber holdings. That's like, what did they say? 20 acres for every 1,000 acres they own. But I think our Forest Service could learn something from these big timber companies. It isn't global warming that's killing the trees. It is litigation. Until we stop that, we're going to have a 1910 fire here. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I agree with you. I think that the Endangered Species Act, the Equal Access to Justice, they've been weaponized--
Yes.
By, and it's become a business model for the environmental extremists. They're profiting at taxpayer expense.
Yeah.
And--
And you know, Warehouser--
This is why the efforts I've taken in Washington have been to get more local control over the management of the forests. Because the Forest Service, even if they intended to do the right thing, they don't have the resources to do it. And they're tied up in knots in litigation.
I hear that.
This is why these categorical exclusions that have been included in the farm bill, the amendments I've entered, provide for a public input process. But once you go through that, which is expedited, there is no litigation. You cannot challenge it in court. And unfortunately, that tool has not historically been available to the county commissioners. It is now, as of January. So that's a new tool that's available to them to do forest management projects on federal ground using the Good Neighbor Authority in the farm bill. That tool's been available to state governments. Many states have used it aggressively. Montana has not. And in speaking with other county commissioners, particularly the commissioners up in Lincoln County--
Lincoln County.
They, they are probably the furthest along in thinking about how to use the Good Neighbor Authority. We're also talking about some potential pilot projects where there might be agreements between the federal government and some local entity. It could be the county commissioners, could be the state, could be a nonprofit, for local management of federally owned property. Canada does this with their provinces, and--
And how does that work for them?
Well, when you can make decisions local or closer, you get better decisions.
I recently had an event. I'm the chairman of the Forest Advisory Committee for the County Commissioners. And I think you came to my meeting, did you? Who was the guy that we had for Good-- Neil?
For Good Neighbor Authority?
Yeah.
Well, it was me and Danielle, with Danielle's--
Yeah, you--
Senator Danes, Austin.
Yeah. And then the guy that spoke on the Good Neighbor--
Montana Logging Association.
Was there. And also the other guy that was actually the head of the Good Neighbor Authority in Montana. So I just hope it's not too little, too late. Another point I'd like to make, the environmental say how the Forest Service doesn't make any money. A few years ago, about 10 years ago, the legislature of Montana did an audit, why the state makes money, why the federal lands don't. They took into consideration geography, roads, timber, types of trees, all that. It came right down to litigation. And then I found out this year that when those environmentalists, we've been litigated, our job too. But when it's down in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, you know that, and it gets, they win their case, these environmentalists, we pay those court costs. How can we change that? That's terrible. That is awful.
We'd have to modify the Equal Access to Justice law--
Well, we better do--
Which we did. We passed it out of committee in the last Congress.
All right.
But we couldn't get it out of the House, and it wasn't voted on by the Senate. So we'll keep working on it.
You know, we are going to have a 1910 fire. You heard about that? In two years, 3 million acres burned up. Or two days, 3 million acres burned up. That, you know, this is scary.
Well, two summers ago, we burned 1.2 million acres. So we're not that far away.
The International Logging Conference was held. My son is part of Real Montana, do you know what that is?
Yes.
Yeah, he just finished out his two years. And he's also a board member of the Montana Logging Conference. But he was invited to go to Potlatch out there. But anyway, at the International Logging Conference, they said that the Beaverhead Deer Lodge National Forest is ripe for a 1910 fire. And that would be terrible. It would just, you know--
Terrible for habitat, terrible for jobs, terrible for health.
It would be the end of the West, you know? And what do you think about terrorism? I'm surprised they haven't dropped firebombs all over the West, you know, to destroy us. Yeah, well, you know, actually, they did mention that this terrorist group, like ISIS, and they mentioned Montana. Because they said, "Everyone's moving in the country." They must think we're really populated. But they did mention Montana. So I thought, that's kind of scary. So thank you.
Yeah. Elena, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I'm Elena Gagliano. I'm also part of the Forest Advisory Group. We call it FMAC for short. Easier. I came across recent notice about NEPA. They're making a proposal. And I was wondering, if you're familiar with the proposal, I know they extended the comment period until Monday. Do you have anything to say on how it's going to be? Is it good? Is it bad?
I've been encouraged by the actions the current administration has been taking. I'm not familiar with the specifics of this proposal. I know in the last Congress, the 115th Congress, I served on the Natural Resources Committee, and we looked at a number of NEPA reforms to continue to protect the environment but streamline the permit process. And that's the goal. And I, I'm making an assumption here, I don't know for sure. I would assume if this current administration is proposing changes to NEPA, it would be consistent with those sorts of objectives.
Yeah.
To make sure we protect the environment but speed up the permit process.
That's what I think the proposal's about. That's what I think the proposal's about.
Yeah.
One other thing regarding law enforcement, and it has to do with the illegal aliens. At one time up here, the Montana Highway Patrol were stopping people. And they were picking a lot of MS-13, okay? One of the attorneys sued. And so they wanted the Highway Patrol to go through training and all this other stuff. As a result, Montana Highway Patrol is not even gonna bother stopping anybody. And I think that's also adding to the problem. We have, and I think Scott would know, that there's a lot of gang, especially in Missoula.
Yeah, the drug trafficking, trafficking is cartel-led. These are gangs that are running these drugs. This is, this is a multi-billion dollar business, bringing these drugs and people into our country. I was down on the southern border in February this year. We toured three ports of entry. I met with five ranch families that live on the border, excuse me, six ranch families. All six families had found dead bodies on their property. All six families had had their homes broken into in the middle of the night by illegals looking for guns and other things. One rancher had used trail cams. He documented by his observations 10,000 people across his property in a single year. We saw videos of them carrying the drugs across the southern border. We have a humanitarian crisis and a national security crisis in our southern border. I'll continue to support the president in securing the border and also reforming the immigration laws. We had two comprehensive immigration bills on the floor last year. I voted for both of them. Unfortunately, they did not pass the House.
Well, one thing that everybody forgets is we've got a northern border also. And Montana is right on that border. And a lot of it's unprotected.
I just met with Customs and Border Patrol last week in, we were in Plennywood and also in Malta, in both locations. I've been up to a number of the ports, and I share your concern. We need to make sure our northern border is secure as well.
Thank you.
I could speak to that a little bit. Sheriff Bill in Lake County is a good friend of mine. And the gang members have infiltrated, as you know, I'm sure you know, the reservations in Montana because of the block and much of that, it's common knowledge. That's what's going on. So I know we would hear the same, as we've had this discussion on lunch and sheriff's conferences and stuff like that. He's got the same set of law orders and problems because of it, because of the gangs that have taken up residence up there.
And I understand, Missoula, it's getting really bad, and they're just gonna come on over.
Recently, as far as immigration and customs goes, but years ago, when you'd stop somebody that had no documentation of being a legal citizen, immigration and customs would just tell you, find out where they're working and cut them loose. And that's a blind eye for too many years, and that's why we're at.
That's right. Thank you, both of you.
All right. Any other public questions or comments for the congressman?
I'm Dick Mala. I, I think that one of the things that really bothers me, especially about the federal government, is that there doesn't seem to be any realization that they're totally bankrupt. They've got $23 trillion worth of debt, and they have no plan whatsoever to pay the debt. I think they're constitutionally obliged to pay the debt and provide for the national defense, and I don't think they're doing either. So to a certain degree, what have you done while you're in Congress in order to change that? And I guess, what do you intend to do when you're in, say, if you're elected governor of the state of Montana?
Thanks for your question. It's a grave concern to me. We do town halls in Montana every month, and I poll folks in Montana. Number one issue is immigration and our southern border. The second issue is the national debt. For my part, I voted against three major funding bills in the last year. Both of the omnibus bills last year and the one that just came in front of us recently. As a business guy, I've balanced a lot of budget, budgets. When you're in a hole, the first thing you do is stop digging. We have to stop expanding the growth of government. And yet, no offense to any Navy folks, we got a bunch of drunken sailors back in Washington. They haven't seen an expense they don't approve of. I will continue to vote against these appropriations bills because I think they're wasteful, and they're mortgaging, you know, the next generation's future. We did have a budget, in the 115th Congress, we passed a full set of budgets for all 11 appropriations bills. It's the first time that happened in over a decade. That budget actually balanced the federal budget in 10 years. We sent that to the Senate, and they never voted on it. And what we got back was a quote compromise bill, which was that plus $300 billion additional spending. I voted against that compromise bill because I thought it was irresponsible. Again, I think when you're, when you're in a hole, the first thing you have to do is stop digging. We just have to say no to new programs. There is a political reality that makes cutting programs very hard. Commissioners know this, that once you create a program, and there are beneficiaries associated with it, even if it's a very small group, those people will figuratively lay on the tracks to protect their benefit. So the most effective way to balance a budget long-term is stop the growth in spending and let, and to the second part of your question, in the state of Montana, our state revenue from taxes goes up every year. Unfortunately, the legislature spends it every year. If all you did was hold spending flat, you would end up with a surplus. And you could use that. Now fortunately, in the state, we have a balanced budget. But we haven't done anything to give tax relief or peel regulations back, and I think that needs to be a priority.
Well, for all practical purposes, we pretty much have abdicated our state sovereignty and the sovereignty of the individuals. When you, when you look at the budget, it's, especially for the federal side, it's a total joke. I don't, I don't know why they even go through the process other than...
I'll continue to vote against these wasteful spending bills.
What's your position on state grants from the federal government and non-government organizations? It seems to me that what we have is a non-government organization that markets the program. The federal government comes in with the bribe money in order to initiate the program. And then we have the 20 pages of mandates that are never even considered or never even discussed. So effectively, the state is just giving up their sovereignty to these grants and non-government organizations.
Money comes with strings. Money comes with strings. Federal money comes to the state with strings. And I, I think that's, this is part of the, you know, part of the reason why I probably spent more time in, in my life on K through 12 education than anything else I've done in my life outside of my professional experience. And yet, I did not try and get on the Education Committee at a federal level because I don't think it's the federal government's responsibility to be involved in education. I think that's a local issue.
That's right.
And this goes back to our 10th Amendment and the fact that, you know, rights not explicitly granted to the federal government are reserved to the states. We've lost sight of that. And unfortunately, it was in, what was it? In the early 1900s, when we went to the popular vote for the senators, it really, that was when we relinquished a lot of our state sovereignty to the federal government. When we went to a popular vote of the senators as opposed to being appointed by the state legislature. That was, actually, that was shared with us when now the late Justice Scalia was in Bozeman for an event. He used to come out to Montana every summer and very eloquently and wittingly speak about these state sovereignty issues. He spoke repeatedly about that being a moment when too much power was ceded to the federal government. All that being very depressing, let me just say, I'm an optimist. I, I think, you may not see it looking at the national news, but from my experience being in Washington now a couple of years, the system is functioning as designed. I will take exception to the spending. But for my part, I've been, I've been able to build relationships on the other side of the aisle to move a lot of legislation for the benefit of Montana without compromising my conservative principles. And this is an area that I like, working with the Democrat Chair of the Agriculture Committee to get bills introduced for relief on ELDs for truckers, specifically for ag, for moving stock. Rural broadband, I'm working with a Democrat on a bill there. I don't agree with them on everything, but we agree on rural broadband. And working with the Healthcare Committee on getting prescription drug prices down. And doing more telemedicine. These are nonpartisan things. And you have to kind of, you have to play with the deck, the hand that you're dealt. And right now, the Democrats are in charge of the House. So I'm gonna focus on things that are important to Montana that I can get done.
What are the things that are important to Montana that you think you can get done? I think we're on the point of going into a major recession or depression. This kind of fiscal irresponsibility has got to stop. It's gonna stop pretty damn soon, just because of the interest rates and everything like that.
Well, one of the things I've been working on is making sure we get our trade deals finalized. I was just with Ambassador Lighthizer recently. We've been, I just sent a letter to Nancy Pelosi, this USMCA, the US, Canada, Mexico trade agreement. The speaker had three objections to the trade agreement. All three of them have been satisfied. So I just recently sent a letter to her saying, listen, we need to put this up for a vote. We do six times more trade with Canada than we do with China. We need to get that, Mexico's already approved. We need to vote on it and get it done so our producers have access to these markets. In March, I was in China. I met with the communist leadership in Beijing. Just last night, I was in Darby, meeting with seven members of the Hong Kong Parliament. I was, there was only, there's only been one...
Darby?
I'm Darby. There's only been one congressional delegation to China this year. I was on that delegation. I also visited with the pro-democracy demonstrators in Hong Kong. These are all interested, are very important to us. We want to get a trade deal with China done, but we've got to resolve some of these other issues as well, so. And then on these individual issues that the commissioners are raising, I have yet to spend a weekend in Washington, DC. I spent every weekend back here in the state, traveled around, meeting with people. And my role is to be your voice back there. I hear you loud and clear on the spending. That's why I'll continue to vote against these appropriations bills.
Well, what's the difference between USMCA and NAFTA? I don't think they really incorporated many changes to that.
Well...
And that we're gonna be continuing, continuing to spend money on that. You look at the trade agreement with Mexico, why are they continuing to allow 100,000 to 1 million people come across the border every year? They're not negotiating with us, and it's kind of a fool's paradise to think that they are gonna negotiate.
The glass may be half-full or half-empty. I think that the fact that the Mexican government has committed 6,000 troops on their southern border because the president called them out is progress. In the USMCA, there are provisions that I encourage the trade ambassador to include in that agreement. I'll give you one example. Currently, under NAFTA, Montana grain going into Canada gets graded as feed quality, which basically means any Montana producer does not get paid a market value for their grain. In the USMCA, grain, Montana grain going into Canada will be graded according to Canadian domestic grading standards. That's a change that has a huge impact for Montana grain producers. That's one example.
Well, I think that we're at a very serious turning point in our economy, in our history, and the situation with the government. It's gonna have to be a lot more emphasis put on these changes that are gonna have to be made. I think you have to get rid of those NGOs, bring our military back. Well, what, $374 billion they were paying on interest. We can't afford foreign aid, we can't afford that. We can't afford to pay $300 billion for these illegal immigrants, and it's just a lack of reality. So I, I'm kind of hoping that you're gonna impose some business common sense onto the Montana economy, and hopefully, we can get back on the right foot. The way we're going now is nothing but disaster.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
One problem I have about you drunken sailors, at least they spend their own money, unlike the ones in Washington, DC.
I think you should be proud of the fact you got commissioners right here and how to balance a budget.
Any other thoughts on, or questions for?
Maybe some arguments on that.
So I got a question for you.
Yeah.
I'm with the local paper here in town. And so you've, you've explained to us a lot of what you've accomplished since you've been in Congress. So, so why not stay there? Why the governorship?
Well, it's a big decision for Montana and for our family. So I was very deliberate about making that decision. I made hundreds and hundreds of phone calls to people all over Montana and asked them, what should I do? And overwhelmingly, over 80% of the individuals I spoke with said, we need business experience in Helena. And at the end of the day, I have, we've been blessed. We've, we've raised our family in Montana, we've built one of the state's largest employers. We've shown that we can bring Montanans back home and help them prosper here. And for the years I have for public service, I want to know I did the most good for the most people. And we haven't had business leadership in Helena for a long time. And so I was, I was convicted by that and encouraged by the people I spoke to, and that's why I made the decision to bring business experience to Helena. Because unfortunately today, our primary exports are grain, beef, and our kids. And I think we can do better than that.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you for coming to visit us.
My pleasure.
Let us know what you can do for you.
Well, let you, let me know how the FERC visit goes.
That'll, I'll assure you that. It's, it's a big deal for the whole community.
Sure.
You know, I wouldn't talk about it, but a whole lot of this community is ag, and that's a lot of water. It's a big deal to us, especially this time of year.
Yeah.
And that's also one of the CKST, I want to spread that good news, and so...
It's not a done deal, but we're making progress.
Well, but you understand, and that's what they want to know, is does he understand?
Yeah.
What the issue is for that.
Without water, you don't get production.
Exactly. Unless anybody else has any other questions? Well, thank the congressman for coming. Appreciate it.